How to grow Iowa because growing Iowa is my dream. We must grow our tourism. And that dream acronym is going to come back a little bit later. We will have a Q and A session at the end of this. So if you're taking notes and writing down your questions, if you already have them, maybe you'll be able to cross them off as Mark takes it over and gives you a ton of information about ITIP. Mark?
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate that introduction. I don't know if I can match quite that energy on a Friday morning, but I'm going to try. Let me go ahead and share my screen to kick things off here. And let me begin by also welcoming everyone and thank you for taking time and all of your busy schedules. I know that we have some elected leaders with us today and I want to say thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to learn more about ITIP or Iowa Travel Industry Partners. I also want to thank the volunteers and tourism professionals that are here with us today. Again, on a Friday morning of a busy week as we get, you know, in that mode of recovery, recovering from the pandemic and getting ready for the traditional peak travel time for the state of Iowa. So ITIP has been something that's been percolating here for the last six years. And I want to talk a bit about the history and the context of it all. But before I get into some of the details of it all, I just want to acknowledge a little bit of my experience to give you a little sense of where I'm coming from. I've been in the industry since March of 1987. I know that's a long time. But while I may be the Executive Director of the Council of Love's Convention and Visitors Bureau, my very first job in the industry was leading the villages of Amburran in southeastern Iowa, and I've had the pleasure and the opportunity to work across the state in a lot of different roles. But I tell you what, when you start in a role like I did in a very rural part of the state in a town of, with a population of 1,000, you understand what it's like to run and be a part of a small organization. So I have a big appreciation for rural Iowa that I hope you're going to get a sense of as I go through this presentation. Also want to acknowledge that when I got started, I joined my region, which at that time was the Eastern Iowa Tourism Association. In fact, on day three is when I went to my first region meeting that happened to take place in my own backyard of Bonaparte, Iowa. And so I got involved and became a part of the Board of Directors for EDA. Later, the Board of Directors and led as president, the Central Iowa Tourism Region. And when I arrived in Council Bluffs, certainly continued to go to region meetings for the Western Iowa Tourism Region. A lot of things have changed with our region system. In fact, when I came along back in 87, the regions had just been consolidated from seven regions to three. And so I recognized that change sometimes is hard as Kim acknowledged at the top of the meeting, but sometimes necessary. And at that point in time in late 1986, it was deemed necessary to consolidate those seven regions into three. And so the last 34 years, we've had the seven regions, or excuse me, the three regions that we've become accustomed to. But it's important, as Kim also mentioned, that we need to embrace change in order to grow. And it might be a time to innovate now that we've had the region system that we've had for the last 34 years to look at doing some things a little bit differently. Because when I came along in the industry, fax machines came along at that time and have since really diminished in their use. That's the kind of innovation that we've had to embrace as we've done business on a day-to-day basis. When I came along too, there weren't email, you know? I didn't get my first email address until the mid 90s. And of course, at about that time is when websites became a part of how we do business. And long gone are those days where you perused a magazine as your source, source of information or inspiration for what you were going to do in terms of your travel. Call a number, order a travel guide, wait a couple of weeks, then take the time to peruse it, make a few more phone calls. That planning process may take a month or more. Today, we may decide later on on Friday that we have a little bit of free time on Friday, excuse me, on Saturday and Sunday. And we may take less than an hour to make those planning decisions to go somewhere, decide what we're going to do, make our hotel reservations. And all of that, of course, will be online. In fact, 80% of hotel reservations, according to the Marriott Corporation, take place online. How often do we call to make a reservation at a hotel? So those are the facts and factors of our industry today, the technology that's employed by our customers. And we have to acknowledge that we need to grow and evolve to keep pace with them. So let's get into that history a little bit, a little bit beyond some of my own personal professional history and get into the history of this concept and where we've come from. The Iowa Tourism Industry Sector Plan is really the genesis of what we're going to be talking about today. The Iowa Tourism Sector Plan, as I'm going to talk about in some detail, was conceived and put together in 2015, led by a group of 19 individuals facilitated by the Institute for Decision Making at the University of Northern Iowa. And when that plan was defined, there were five priority outcomes and competitive factors shared by the tourism industry as determined by this 19-member planning group. Starting with increase economic growth through targeted marketing, increase unique tourism experiences, improve collaboration partnerships and expertise amongst stakeholders, increase level of support and resources for tourism industry. And then finally elevate understanding and responsiveness to changing visitor needs offerings and Iowa's competitive position. Changing visitor needs, I've just kind of talked about that. We need to keep up with how fast they want to do some planning. And as I just indicated, that could be a matter of minutes or hours and not the weeks that I've indicated earlier. I'm going to get beyond this nice cover for the Iowa Tourism Industry Sector Plan and show you that there's much more depth to it. So here's the beginning of it, a very nice cover. But as you're going to see, there's a lot more depth to this than just simply a cover. It gets into outlining what these five priority outcomes and competitive factors are. And then you get into the planning process and timeline used by that 19-member planning group along with the Institute for Decision Making. You get into the planning process itself. As you can see, we took all of 2015 through this planning process. And we even went into 2016, we were talking about the implementation of the plan. Going a little bit deeper, you can see that's outlined in some copy. And then on this page, you can see the core stakeholders that were outlined. Clearly, the three tourism regions, as I've already mentioned, are a part of this, the Iowa Tourism Office. But some folks that we haven't traditionally always worked with directly, such as the professional developers of Iowa and the Iowa Association of Business and Industry, Iowa Community Colleges, but also certainly the usual suspects of players like lodging, attractions, parks, destinations, all of those folks are a part of what we consider the core stakeholders for this plan. We get into some of the primary outcomes and objectives. And I want to direct your attention to what has brought us here today in terms of the Iowa Tourism Industry Sector Plan. And that is Objective 3.1. Establish a statewide private sector-led organization to foster collaboration and partnerships, encourage innovation and advocate on behalf of the tourism industry. And as we're going to talk about a little bit later, Objective 3.2 was also to establish a statewide Iowa Tourism Foundation or the ITIP Foundation, as we're going to refer to it a little bit later. So that 19-member planning group is the ones that defined why we're going after and pursuing the development of this private sector-led organization called ITIP. Okay, let me zoom out a little bit more, go to the next page. Got a little bit more information about the plan itself. I'm not going to dive into this, but I'll certainly encourage you to take a look at it at some point. And then that 19-member advisory team is outlined here. So all three of the tourism regions are named because they certainly were a part of it, as was the Iowa Tourism Office, but also attractions, lodging, the museum associations, another example, destinations, really tried to be reflective of what is made up of the Iowa Tourism Industry itself. And then last but not least, another important factor is that, excuse me, the plan and the planning process certainly had to be paid for. And these are the folks, the organizations and businesses that step forward to sponsor the planning process. Let me take you back to the slide deck here and we'll get into more of the details regarding this. So in as far as the timeline is concerned, as I mentioned before, the plan was put together in 2015. But I don't know if it was planning fatigue or what it is, but what happens to so many great plans is that after you get done with some of what you consider the hard part, you end up putting it on the shelf and letting it set. Well, the Iowa Destination Marketing Alliance or IDMA decided, no, no, we've spent too much time and money to let that happen. So at their annual planning retreat in November of 2015 in Burlington, they hired a facilitator, Tammy Rogers, who's done a lot of facilitating on behalf of the industry. In fact, has facilitated a Travel Federation of Iowa planning session. And she came together and walked us through a very deliberate process where we talked about, okay, we've got this plan, how do we take this and start implementing it? And it really made sense to start with that private sector statewide organization and creating it. And so without a lot of delay, in January of 2018, skipping past Thanksgiving, Christmas and New Years, we convened another statewide meeting of the entire industry. And this was held at the Hotel Patty and Perry. And Tammy Rogers came back and led us through a brainstorming session where we talked about the dialogue that we had just a couple of months before at IDMA, but opened it up and really wanted to have the Boards of Directors of these different tourism organizations give us some feedback on the plan. And the conversation held just a couple of months before at the IDMA session. And from that discussion, we just led forth into really trying to talk about this a little bit more, taking that feedback. And then just eight, nine, 10 months later in September of 2018, another statewide meeting was held with some of these very same individuals representing organizations from across the state. Tammy came back to facilitate that conversation. And we had that meeting in Ames just immediately prior to the Power of Travel event that was going to take place the next day. So we've tried to make these statewide meetings as convenient as possible. It was from there, we got the charge to go ahead and really take the steering committee and charge it with putting some details behind a lot of what we wanted to see happen. And then in earnest, we started meeting as a steering committee in Ames most often, where in that fall, leading into late spring, we were really putting a lot of details behind what needed to happen next. A lot of the nitty gritty details that we hadn't really dove into up to that point. I'm going to make note of a meeting that we did have in January of 2019 that's not in the timeline. And that's when we first started having conversations with the Iowa Economic Development Authority and Iowa Tourism Office regarding these details. We had a meeting with Debbie Durham, the Director of IEDA, with Jackie Mattson, representing both IEDA and the tourism office. And just let them know that this is what we were doing, solicit their ideas. And certainly they didn't object to us pursuing this. And then of course, put that additional detail behind the concept. And then for one more thing to do, to make sure that we had something that was representative and responsive to the industry, we convened an industry focus group of people that had not been a part of the conversation up to that point. And that too was held in Ames where we had an opportunity to really fine tune what we were thinking in terms of dues for ITIP. And then between June and December of that year, we started presenting ITIP to a number of organizations. I can tell you that in November of 2019, at the Power of Travel in Storm Lake, I presented ITIP to the Iowa Group Travel Association Board of Directors. And after that presentation, the board gave its initial okay to start discussions in terms of merging into ITIP. That led to a meeting that we held in February of this year with the membership asking their approval or not of us formally being, Iowa Group Travel Association becoming a part of ITIP. And the membership approved it without dissent. Then a few weeks later, November of 2019, the Iowa Group, excuse me, the Iowa Destination Marketing Alliance membership had a chance to hear the ITIP presentation and they approved it without dissent. And so we were systematically going through that process. And I can say, although I wasn't a part of these conversations, or at least all of them, that the Eastern Iowa Tourism Association, excuse me, heard out the information and has interest in becoming a part of it as well. And then I'll also note one other meeting that we had with IEDA that after Jackie Mattson left the IEDA organization, myself and Carla Isink met with Conan Kapelman in January of 2020 to bring her up to date. So this has been something that we tried to keep as many parties informed as we possibly could and have tried to be as transparent as we possibly could in this process. Excuse me, I can say that the pandemic certainly, as all of us experienced a year ago, interrupted the process, but for not very long. So in April of last year, work began on forming that initial ITIP Board of Directors and monthly meetings began to occur. So much so that we were able to put together organization bylaws and articles of incorporation for the primary nonprofit, the 501(c)(6), known as ITIP, and then the associated foundation, the 501(c)(3). Those were filed, I can say that the committee started meeting as early as October of 2020, trying to put even more detail behind the concept, leading us to a point that in July of 2021, we're not only going to begin accepting membership, but we're going to be operating at that point. Who is involved in ITIP? Well, the best place to start is certainly in the membership categories. And I'm going to start on the right-hand side with lodging. And you're going to see that dues have been built around the capacity or ability to pay. We want to make this as easy for organizations and businesses to be a part of, making it as affordable as we can. And so for lodging, that's built around the number of hotel rooms for a lodging property. For those that have 100 or fewer, the dues are 150. For those that have 101 or more, it's 250. Counties have long been supporters of our industry. And so that commit would be 500, which is certainly very doable. Affiliate organizations, so industry trade associations would be 250. And for most other members other than destinations, for attractions, museums, restaurants, chambers of commerce, economic development, corporations, individuals and others, this is built around the number of full-time employees that the business organization has. For those that have 0 to 10, it's 150, 11 to 24, 250, and 25 or more is 500. Destination marketing organizations are a bit different. And these organizations are defined as having at least one full-time employee dedicated to tourism. And this is built around budgets. And so for those that have a budget of 150,000 or less, the budget is 750, scaled all the way up to those that, and there's certainly not a lot of us that have a million or more in terms of funding, but those are 7,500. Here I'm going to note that there's a lot of value that we're going to be delivering here because under this large tent that we're creating, these organizations that belong are going to have access to sports marketing, which many do not have access to that, group travel, which is an important priority for many, leisure and meetings and other things that we're going to be able to deliver without having organizations and businesses having to belong to multiple groups, having to kind of coordinate schedules around those meetings and those activities. We're really trying to open things up here. And this is an indication of those organizations that have already committed to belonging and participating in ITIP. And that's also shown through this map, the statewide map. You're going to see dots across the state. We want to make this even more populated than it is. But beyond the pinpoints, you're going to also see on the left-hand side, the regional associations that are committed to ITIP along with the statewide associations in the private sector. And you're going to note CIT Signature Transportation, that is Kim Gribach's company. We definitely want to make sure the private sector is involved and integrated along with the nonprofit sector and certainly governmental organizations as well. How is ITIP positioned for the future of tourism? Well, that begins with the mission and vision for the organization. And that mission starts with the Iowa Travel Industry Partners being the unified driving force of the travel and tourism industry promoting Iowa and its communities to positively impact the economy and quality of life for all Iowans. The vision is for the state to become a vibrant travel destination with thriving and diverse communities, which inspire visitors and Iowans led by a recognized brand and a united association of industry leaders driven to make the state of Iowa a premier destination of choice. The key benefits start with greater efficiencies of resources, staff, volunteers, programs and advocacy. Creating this bigger tent means that we're not going to have audits and reviews done of multiple organizations. We're not going to have part-time administrative staff that is only able to do so much, but we're going to be able to have that administrative staff serve so many more members and also attend to so many more programming and functions. We're going to have amplified communications, marketing and advocacy under one voice for the entire industry along with connecting more entities to all programs regardless of size, without having to join multiple organizations. And the leading into then building on successful existing programs and partnerships while looking for additional opportunities. Our purpose is very clear. That's the increased traveler spending in Iowa. To unite segments of the travel industry, enhance the travel industry's political strength and program impact, elevate professionalism within the industry, position travel as a respected revenue generator in Iowa. And it is very much a revenue generator. And then build private-public funding resources for travel efforts and respect Iowa's diverse level of tourism entities, inclusive of size, geography, culture, business segments, and so much more. This all brings us to DREAM. And that's our acronym that really defines what we're going to be pursuing. And what better acronym for Iowa, the home of field dreams? And the acronym stands for Development, Resources, Education, Advocacy and Marketing. And each one of these letters of the acronym has a committee behind it. Starting with the Development Committee, which is going to focus on membership, fundraising and relationships. So the top three priorities for fiscal year '22 include recruit membership that reflects the diversity of Iowa's travel industry. Number two, leverage partnerships with public and private entities for the betterment of Iowa's tourism industry. And number three, grow tourism stature through coordinated advocacy and strategic partner alliances, including such organizations as Farm Bureau and the Iowa League of Cities. The Resources Committee focuses on grants, mentorships, professional services and technical tools and works in synergy with the ITIP Foundation. Here we have four priorities for fiscal year '22, beginning with the implementation of an industry-wide mentorship program. As Chair of this committee, I can tell you that our committee has been very busy since October. And we have defined a 12-month-long mentorship program, specifically designed to help the mentor as well as the mentee go through and systematically inform someone either new to the industry or new to Iowa about the various aspects, how to really plug into the things that they need to do to be successful. As well as we're recommending that the mentor and mentee utilize Zoom. We're finding today that we can communicate with a great deal of individuals across the state. And we think we can start matching mentors with mentees, whether they're in neighboring communities or across the state. And then allow them to use Zoom to make introductions with Iowa Tourism Office staff or people connected with ITIP to make sure that mentee is gaining the most out of the program. And then along with that, we have a mentor and mentee application program so that we can qualify and know who the mentor is best matched with and then also understand the needs of the mentee. The second priority is to work with an Iowa-based higher education institution to design an economic impact calculator for groups, meetings, sports and festivals. The one thing that we really have heard, I think, in all of our collective professional lives is what is the ROI? What is the return on investment? And so the work that we do here is critical to make sure that we have a calculator that really works for the industry. We were very fortunate in 2013 that Josh Shonberger with Think Iowa City worked with a graduate school class at the University of Iowa to create an event calculator, an event economic impact calculator. What we did find is that it is pretty labor-intensive. And so this committee has already started talking with CyBiz Lab at Iowa State University to kind of put a finer point to this. And we may be working with them or a group associated with the University of Iowa or U and I to make that happen for us. The third priority is to develop an industry survey by segments to compare assets across Iowa for the purposes of leveraging public investments. And then fourth, design and implement grant programs that fit the needs of the tourism industry, such as a micro-capacity building grant or a rural regional sports authority district grant program. I've already cited that when I started in the industry, it was at the villages of Amburran. I can tell you from personal experience, the difference between being successful or not can be as small as a $250 or $500 grant. We see this as a real priority to assisting people in rural communities that don't have the greatest resources, that really have this need for something that's a micro-capacity building grant. And so that's why we're looking at that. And likewise, we see opportunity across all of Iowa's 99 counties to have a regional sports authority district grant for rural communities that have assets and facilities that they could be using to attract sporting events and tournaments and really grow their tourism impact. And we see an opportunity, given the success of the Sports Authority Program for the last many fiscal years since fiscal year 2008. That's been successful for the 10 grants that have been available statewide. Why can't we open that up for rural communities as well, is our question. Education, this committee is going to be focusing on networking opportunities, best practices, accessible training and professional development. It too will be working in coordination with the ITIP Foundation. Its three priorities for fiscal year '22 is first of all, coordinate with higher education institutions to develop an Iowa tourism and hospitality education track. Number two, develop networking experiences to strengthen industry awareness and relationships amongst Iowa attractions and cultural entities. And third, strengthen the Iowa Tourism Office and regional education promotional efforts through enhanced collaboration. The Advocacy Committee is going to be focusing on identifying key issues, creating meaningful coalitions, empowering members and engaging in advocacy events and programming. This committee's priorities for fiscal year '22 will be to ensure consistent and professional communication with Iowa elected officials at the federal, state and local levels. And here I just want to make an aside, I too want to welcome Iowa's elected officials that are here with us today. But I understood that Senator Sorensen is with us today. And I don't know if he recalls working with me, but I had the pleasure of working with Senator Sorensen when he was creating a Freedom Rock for Wapalo County in Atumwa just a couple of months before I left Atumwa to come to Council Bluffs. It was a pleasure doing that. And now we see Freedom Rocks become an attraction throughout the state of Iowa. So I commend him for his very meaningful work for the state of Iowa. The second priority is to host advocacy events with elected officials. And three, identify elected officials who are supportive of Iowa's tourism efforts and provide consistent positive messaging aimed at increasing impactful funding. And then last but certainly not least, the Marketing Committee is going to be focusing on the development of the association's brand and collateral materials, while also focusing on the niche markets, including sports, group travel and meetings. Its three priorities for fiscal year '22 is to develop and implement niche marketing initiatives for groups, sports, leisure meetings and others. The second is to implement co-op programs for marketing initiatives and trade show opportunities. And third, create marketing education to fit the various needs and expertise of the tourism industry. That naturally leads us to, how can you get involved? Well, first of all, your involvement can mean being a part of one of the committees that I've just described or one of the subcommittees that no doubt are going to be created underneath those committees. So if development, resources, education, advocacy or marketing are of interest to you, you're going to have an opportunity to take part. That's what this is all about, is really engaging the industry, whether you're with a governmental unit, be a conservation board or a nonprofit associated with a museum, or if you're with a business such as a lodging property or a campground or many others that are involved, restaurants, you name it, that are a part of this industry and define what makes it so great. So being interested and becoming a part of it is as easy as using this email address, Aaron Schmitz, who is our administrator, would be happy to connect you with the information you need or have someone follow up and talk to you about some of the details that I've outlined today. And that kind of brings us to the natural next part of it, which is our questions. I want to thank you for your kind attention as I turn things back over to Kim Gribach. Kim, take it away.
Oh, thank you, Mark. A lot of information and I hope many of your questions were answered in just that presentation. You know, as Mark was talking, I was taking some notes of my own. Just this morning, I had a conversation with my 10-year-old son about change. Didn't really realize it, but he's taking Didn't really realize it, but he's taking the ISAPS. So it was ITBS when I was little, then it became Iowa Test of Educational Development, IEDS. And now it's a five-letter acronym. So change grew the acronym. And I asked him, are you using a number two pencil to fill in those little circles? He laughed at me and said, no, Mom, they're on the computer. So, yeah, aged myself a little bit there, but that's how things evolve and how things change. And that's why this is so exciting. Also, I wanted to share with you this whole dream acronym. I actually had a literal dream last night about this meeting and how excited everyone was to come together and unite as one voice to grow Iowa tourism. So let's see what some of those questions are so we can help share the enthusiasm. Number one, what do you anticipate the training opportunities will look like if we regionalize? I appreciate the opportunity for area training that's not located in central Iowa. So those educational opportunities, who would like to take this question? By the way, I have a team here. Mark, we've met with the Council Bluffs, Libby with Clear Lake, Rebecca at Okoboji, Nikki down in the Quad Cities, Chelsea down in Burlington. And I think there are some other board members present as well. But, education, I am on the education committee. So does anyone else want to speak?
I will kick it off, Kim, just real quickly. And then I'll let somebody else talk because certainly you've heard a lot from me. Like you, I'm on the education committee. We had our very first meeting this week. And so I know that we're just digging into defining what those subject matters are going to be. But I know that one part of this, as I've already talked about, is that we're going to be leaning into technology, taking advantage, full advantage of what we've learned about the pandemic. And that is Zoom is not a bad thing, for lack of a better term. We're just going to refer to those video meetings as Zoom. It's a great way of connecting people and taking the opportunity to eliminate travel time and inconvenience and making it as accessible as we possibly can. I'll let somebody else kind of chime in as well.
I'll go ahead and chime in. I am not on the education committee, I'm on a couple others. But I just kind of envision as being the, our goal is to be that one unified voice for Iowa. So I think the educational opportunities are really what you all want. You are going to have a say in what you want to learn about. And we are here to listen to that and make sure that those opportunities happen. So if there's something that you really, really want to know about, reach out and we'll make sure that that is on our radar.
I do know when we met in person as a board, we also talked about, you know, you can do hybrids, right? So maybe you're zooming in from a member's location. So you get to see their site and network that way. But also, if you can't drive the four hours across our state, you can zoom in. Another topic of conversation was partnering with a university or a community college and creating an actual tourism certificate that can be achieved. There was a fun acronym for it, I don't remember what it is now. Anyone on board, remember what that acronym was?
Yes, it was me, it was Iowa Tourism Industry Professionals.
Awesome, thank you, Ashley. I love that acronym, I just need to write it down. I'm going to go down to the next question. Um, the question was, there are two tourism organizations that are statewide that this person was aware of, TFI and Travel Iowa. Why are we creating a new entity instead of merging these? Hmm.
I can take that one, as previously been on several statewide boards, including Iowa Group Travel, Travel Federation of Iowa. Under Group Iowa or Team Iowa Sports, there's actually been several statewide organizations. And many of them have chosen to go ahead and enroll over into ITIP to streamline the process. I can attest that I've been in several board meetings, hearing the same Iowa tourism update from our state office several times a month, just because I've been on different boards and they would present to all of us to let us know what they're doing at the state level. So really, it's just about efficiency and how our organization as an industry of representatives can work better with our state office. That is never going to go away. We love them and their partnerships and we're just really excited to streamline their processes as well.
I do think that's important. It's that public-private partnership that we hear so much about. Joining with the state tourism office, joining together across the state to become that one voice and become efficient.
And Kim, I was remiss in not mentioning, you know, one aspect of the change that we've seen in this industry. And that is, the Travel Federation of Iowa is mentioned in that question. Well, the Travel Federation hasn't been around forever. There was an organization that predated it, and that was the Iowa Travel Council. So there's been a need identified to change, to evolve. That's a part of that continuing conversation that we have as an industry, to look at how we can become more effective. And, you know, one of the other things I didn't point out that I have in the past is the fact that as long as I've been in the industry, and we know how far that goes back now. But one thing that hasn't changed, has really not changed at all, is that in a ranking of the 50 states and the size of their state tourism budget, Iowa has always language in the 40s, meaning that there's at least 40 other states that have a bigger budget. And granted, there are some, you know, states that logically, because they have a beach, or they have a theme park, or they have the mountains, or they're a big city, certainly, you know, maybe have the revenue to be able to support that. But we know, from having been in this industry, travel doesn't have to be any farther than 50 miles. And we do, with our existing industry, create a $9 billion return to the state of Iowa in terms of commerce being done. I think we're just recognizing that being in the 40s is something that we don't want to have continue any longer. We need to do things differently in order to be more effective.
Thank you for bringing that point up, because that is, part of my dream was getting out of the 40s. I am a motor coach company, so group travel, of course, is where my niche lays. And I have taken groups, right, to South Dakota where you see all those buffalo. But guess where I fed one? Here, in Iowa. The experiences here are unmatched. And we can be a destination state. We don't have to be the staycation where only Iowans go. I mean, we already know from Iowa Economic Development's study that people that travel to a state want to live there. So just imagine all that tourism is going to bring to Iowa. I'm getting excited. I'll go to the next question. I'd be interested in learning more about why some of the other regions are not interested in the proposed merger.
I can take this one.
Thank you, Rebecca.
I think what it really comes down to is change can be hard. And so there's a lot of questions that come up. And so as we've been evolving and moving towards this new model, I think there have been a lot of questions out there. And that's the total purpose of today. We wanted to get as many people involved to come online and to ask questions. We wanted to tell you about the organization. We wanted to guide you through what we've been setting up and tell you how excited we are about it. We want to tell you, we're excited for you to belong to this organization and to get involved and to help us guide it towards the future. And we want you to ask all your questions that you might have so that you do feel more comfortable with it, so we can bring that whole industry together.
Thank you, Rebecca. Next question. Ah, we might have to go back to that dues structure slide, Mark. The question is, where do local cities fall into that dues structure?
Yeah, let me, let me bring that up, just give me a moment. Might have to do some backing up here.
While Mark is bringing up that slide, that is my last question. So if you have something burning in the back of your head, send it to Aaron. I would love to get that put to rest for you.
Well, and really, we can just ask people, if you have a question, just use the chat feature and type it in the chat. And then we would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. That's, that's the whole purpose of today.
Yes.
Kim, can you see that?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, and this question, can you repeat that again?
Where would cities fall in this membership category? I'm assuming this is a city without a CBB? That might be the question?
Well, I'm going to make a jump or a leap to a conclusion that since we have someone from the city of Newton registered for this, it might be coming from them. And if, in this case, it's coming from an individual associated with the city that is involved and is a full-time employee engaged in tourism, they would fall under the DMO category. But if not, we would probably have to have a conversation because we don't always have perhaps as much engagement from cities directly. Because usually, those responsibilities are delegated to a nonprofit that might be a CBB or a tourism organization. It's, you know, possible, well, and I'll use the example of the city of Cedar Falls. Integrated into the city is the Cedar Falls, I believe it's the Tourism and Visitors Bureau, TVB, that Kim Manning heads. And she has long been a part of the industry and of course, long involved in many organizations regarding the tourism industry. So in that example, Kim would fall underneath the DMO category and based on her budget would be what the dues are required. Now, if there's not a full-time employee dedicated to tourism for a city, then we're probably going to be looking to the general membership category and making the determination if the full-time employee number applies in that case. So there's always going to be something that's going to fall outside of maybe these neatly defined categories or subsections for dues. And we're happy to, you know, have that conversation to see what works best and what is most appropriate.
And I would also like to chime in on that. The Kim Manning example was great. I'm with Clear Lake Chamber. And when I joined IDMA, I was looking at that dues structure and I thought it was our overall budget for our chamber. But no, that dues is for your tourism budget. So Kim's tourism budget, not the entire city of Cedar Falls. And so I luckily prepaid my IDMA dues for a few years there with that check that we got. So just to kind of reiterate that, if you are falling under that organization, it's not your full organization's budget, it is your tourism budget.
Good point, Libby.
Thank you. Because as a private organization, I don't collect dues or memberships. So I rely on those of you that do to help answer that question. All right, man, team, we must have done a great job. That if you have a question, put it in the chat box and we'll start answering those now. Helping answer those questions, I have a team. There's myself, Kim Grebich, Mark Ekman, who just finished up with the slides. We have Rebecca from Okoboji, Libby from Clear Lake, and Ginger from Charles City. There are also other board members on this call, so they may chime in as well. First question, I think we saw the slide. So maybe, I don't know, Mark, if you want to bring it back up, but who are your public-private partnerships? I'm private, so...
Do you want me to bring that slide back up, do you?
Sure.
Let me see if I can back my way through this. Okay, here we go. Here are the folks, at least on a membership level, that we've talked about a little bit. Here's a list of the names. If you're talking about some of the things that were kind of hinted towards, such as the Iowa League of Cities, you know, other partners or corporate entities. You know, it's going to start with these associations. And we've already got the interest of the Iowa Gaming Association, the Iowa Bed and Breakfast Guild, Iowa PGA. So in some sense, we're tapping into that on association level. But, you know, going beyond that, we're going to get so many other entities involved, but certainly working very closely in a private-public sense with IEDA, the Iowa Tourism Office, which is why we're so glad that Amy is a part of this presentation. But, you know, so many others that could involve the Iowa Department of Cultural Affairs, Natural Resources, that department, a number of those. And I guess harking back, you know, using a little bit of history back in the day, when I did work at the Iowa Tourism Office, you know, once upon a time, we were working with the Best Western Hotels of Iowa, as well as the Choice Hotels of Iowa, as some example of some folks that were interested in getting some more exposure, interested in working with the Iowa Tourism Office, which we certainly wouldn't dissuade them from doing that. But if they were interested in working with this group and its members directly, those are the kind of collaborations that we would seek out.
And if you did notice that March 9th was when that list was created, and another month has gone by. So it has grown since that time. Mark, you happened to mention the state tourism office. So another question was, what is this organization going to do for the tourism industry that the current state tourism office and IEDA does not do?
Any of our, our dream team want to take a whack at that?
Ready, Mark? Could you repeat the question, how it was worded?
Yes. What is this organization going to do for the tourism industry that the current state tourism office and IEDA does not do?
Well, ITIP is not looking to take over any of the great work that IEDA and Iowa Tourism Office is doing or will do in the future. We just want to have an avenue to work with them a lot more collaboratively and effectively. I, probably about two years ago, I served on several boards. And I know Amy's colleagues were there at all the meetings, giving the same report over and over and over. So we really wanted to work more effectively with them, but are not looking at taking anything from them.
It's part of that collaborative effort we were talking about, coming together.
I was going to say, also, I think this organization gives all of us who are members of the industry an opportunity to come together with people from across the state to join forces and come up with ideas and be an active part of the industry as well. So this gives us another avenue for that.
One thing I definitely learned over this last year is that a collective voice is heard first, because it's louder. All right, looking at another question. Will you have research information like the state and how will you fund this research? Is there someone from the foundation that could maybe speak to that?
Let me, let me take a stab at that because it falls kind of underneath the Resources Committee. And full transparency, I'm the Chair of the Resources Committee. So we've had some conversations about this too. Like I said earlier, we've been meeting since October and really haven't wasted any time in trying to address some things. We've reached out and talked individually with Luanne Reinders, again, to avoid duplication. And in fact, at one of our more recent meetings, Amy joined us to talk a little bit about their aspirations and plans in terms of research and the like. One of the things, though, I'll go back to something I mentioned very specifically, is an event impact calculator. And it's true enough, in 2013, Josh, working with a University of Iowa graduate class, put together something that was a groundbreaking tool. We had not had it before. And we identified some things that we would like to improve. And since having those early discussions, I know that Kevin from Ames and myself had a conversation with Side Biz Lab. And that's an organization associated with Iowa State University that can help with these kinds of things. Well, we don't want to put out something that's a non-compete bid for an opportunity to work with us. So we're going to seek out other organizations to see how they land in terms of their affordability and their, I guess, cohesiveness with a project like this. But we could conceivably work on fine-tuning what Josh's... But we could conceivably work on fine tuning what Josh's class did at the University of Iowa and put a finer point to it to make it an easier tool to use. So that's one example of, of getting into the weeds on something that while the state might be able to develop something, we've been the ones as an industry have already done some due diligence and, and could really, I think, take this to the next level to give each and every one of us a tool that's a lot easier to use and yet can provide that return on investment that we're so often asked to provide and so often can't provide the kind of answer we would like to have.
That research is so important, especially when you are advocating for your industry at the federal and state level government.
I would like to just add as well, I'm on the foundation board, and we've had discussions about doing some additional fundraising with private business partners. I think that's one of the things that excites me about the potential for this organization is that we're looking at having a full-time staff member to help us establish some of these relationships and bring more people around the table. And that should help us fund that research and cultivate some deeper relationships with other arms of the industry.
Anyone else? Okay, I have one last question that's been submitted. Again, if you have a question, go ahead and submit that through the chat. The last question I have at this time is, do you plan to provide outreach and hand-on technical assistance to the whole state and industry? And who will be providing this?
I would say absolutely. We want to provide research and, or outreach to our whole industry. And I think one of the ways that we're going to do that is through that mentorship program that we're developing. If you're a new member to the industry, or if you're new to the state, there's just a lot going on that, that we all take for granted, who have maybe been involved for a long time. So it would be really nice if you can partner up with someone who's going to take the time to pick up the phone and call you, or to reach out to you via email on a regular basis and just say, hey, this is coming up, and I want to tell you a little bit more about it so that you can understand our industry a little bit better, and you can feel more involved with it. And our goal ultimately is to, to get more people from around the state to really be collaborating. And so that'll be done really throughout with our industry members, but then also with some of the leadership from the board of ITIP, as well as once a director is hired with that help of the director as well.
I think the great thing about the mentorship program is it deputizes a pretty large group of industry members that have a tremendous amount of experience and talent that then can be accessible for those who are in the most need of something like that. Again, you know, as I've already mentioned, this is something that has a great deal of detail. There's a system here that would introduce the mentee to a process of becoming more acclimated to the industry and know the ins and outs. We have a lot of acronyms, you know, Dream is just one of many, IGTA, IDMA, and the sort. Just kind of getting through that part of it first is kind of an armful. And then going on to being introduced to other industry members is another part of that mentorship program. And because of what we've gone through with the pandemic, and again, embracing technology and innovation, now we have a mentorship program that doesn't rely upon a phone call, which can only do so much, or meeting in person, which is sometimes burdensome, is getting on a Zoom call and sharing information across the screen. You get to see what the other person looks like. But more importantly, you can convey information in a much more meaningful way. Both sides are left with something that they felt like they've accomplished. Well, I've conveyed this information. Now they have some tools readily at their disposal. And I think because of the pandemic and because of our use of Zoom, as we're doing today, we've come up with a program that really can effectively communicate in a way that we have not before.
And I'll also add that hands-on assistance would also be covered by our education opportunities and really listening to our members and what skills they're needing or needing help with. And also being able to have them reach out to the organization, and maybe they can refer them to someone that maybe excels in that, to give them some tips on a one-on-one basis. But just a really great network to just have to make one, one contact, point of contact.
I did have two more questions. Oh, three more questions come in. All right, everyone's getting excited now, right? This one, there are not many attractions in smaller organizations listed. How can we be assured that they will be represented, represented equitably? I'll actually take that one as a small private organization. Get involved. I mean, I am make, going to make sure that group travel is definitely discussed and covered through ITIP, because that is what my business does, group travel. Whether they're coming in for a sporting event and need transportation to and from the events, or they're coming in and they want to take some side trips and side tours, or they're touring the entire state. And so as we grow and we get more members, don't worry, I'm going to make sure that those little small towns, because you've heard me say it before. Well, maybe you haven't, but I always like to say, I've seen a lot of buffalo in South Dakota, but I fed one in Iowa. And it's because of those small organizations that we get to do that and experience things on a different level in our great state. Anyone else want to chime in on that portion?
I'll add something to that, Kim. Now that my internet is back, I apologize, everyone. I had to, my computer's lacking today. So I am happily, I enjoy being the small kid on the block. It's really nice knowing that people from across the state know who Ginger in Charles City is, you know, to get that random phone call or email because someone talked to someone in Dubuque, or the Quad Cities, or in Council Bluffs, and they heard about our Whitewater Park, or the grass tennis courts, or whatever it is. You know, it's great to know that you have these connections and contacts all across the state of Iowa. And, you know, people are promoting me as much as I am promoting them. And as a smaller community, I also have a smaller budget. And being a part of a larger organization also allows you to take advantage of those opportunities that you don't always get a chance to participate in when you don't have the funding or the staffing. So as Kim said, I plan to jump right in, get involved, and, and make sure my voice is heard. It's a great opportunity.
I'll also add kind of my experience here in Clear Lake. We're also a small community, rural, and my organization's attractions and smaller organizations here, I think at some point, we're part of a larger statewide organizations. But as far as the last 11 years since I've been in my position, they really rely on me to be part of those organizations and pay it out of my budget, and then refer that information to them. I know, speaking with the Surf Ballroom, they were involved with the state organization association earlier because that was the only way to be able to apply for their grant funds. So I could see that that grant opportunity opening up more for some of those smaller organizations, as well as all the other great things that they'll be able to access, instead of just going through me as the chamber representative.
Great small voices heard right here today. So the next question I have is, do you have a budget for this next year for staff and programs? I think our, is our budget chair? I'm not seeing. I am on that committee. I can tell you, yes, there's a budget. Josh, I see you light up. I'll let you jump in as well.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. I'm Josh from Corville and Iowa City in North Liberty. And I'm on the Budget Committee. Kevin Bork, who runs Ames, CVB, is the chair of that particular committee. And we've spent a lot of time working on that particular area, kind of running parallel to a lot of the work of the other committees, the Dream Committees. And we have essentially about four different scenarios at play, depending on the sort of resources available at the beginning of the fiscal year. And yes, we will have a full-time director. And, you know, by, with all hope, we'll have probably two people that'll be full-time to start the year in July. You know, as you go through those dream initiatives and areas of work and focus, certainly, it's all going to come down to resources and the ability to move the needle faster in some areas than others. That's the nature of what we all already do within our own organizations, is, you know, how quickly we are able to move. But we have prioritized some. And I'm also on the foundation board, and we have a pretty good plan in place for how we're going to sort of engage the private sector, partnership with tourism, and hopefully kickstart some resources on, on that front as well. So we spent a lot of time thinking about it and are ready to move forward and excited here, July 1. So if you have any other questions on that, feel free to email me personally. Kim's on that. Kevin Bork, as I said, is our chair and knows probably the most about it.
Thank you, Josh. I have one more question at this time. It says, right now, the board seems to be composed of mostly DMO reps, which is understandable with IDMA. Moving forward, will it remain a DMO-led organization, or will a board be an equal mix of attractions, hotels, restaurants, conservation, nature, and DMOS? And private sector, right here. The board was, Tavis, can you take that? Because right now, you're our direct, you're our lead, I don't, not director, sorry if we have to hire that position. But the board was compiled, compiled from existing organizations, correct?
That's correct. So IDMA, IGTA, Easton Iowa Tourism, their leadership teams, and Team Iowa, their leadership teams sort of make up our existing board of directors. And so board leadership will be elected by membership. And it will be, it is, we are intentional about, we are aiming to be intentional about making sure that the diversity of the board represents the diversity of the industry. So it will be cross segments, it will be cross geography, it will be cross community size. Budgets, I think, are important to ensure, you know, the intent of this organization is to take all of the different voices that, that speak on their own path for our industry, and make sure that we're on, on the same accord and make sure that this industry, I've found in my four years, is incredibly interconnected. It's one of the things that I especially love about this industry, is that even when I'm competing with a Josh Schaumberg, Schaumberger, or I'm competing with Greg Edwards for an event, I still know that I can call those folks up. And, and, and they've got my back and I've got theirs. And it's because we all recognize that what's good for Des Moines, what's good for Clear Lake, what's good for the Grout Museum in Waterloo, or Lost Island, or what's good for individual attractions, what's good for communities and destinations is ultimately good for all of us. It's all a part of the ecosystem. And so this board, I think, is incredibly dedicated to ensuring that we are comprised of, that we're representative of the membership of the organization and what tourism means here in state.
Thank you, Tavis. We all had to begin somewhere, right? And so right now, it's made up of former, of the leadership of the other organizations, and we look forward to growing that as well as we move forward. I do have one more question that got in. My CVB is regionally focused and has partners in the tri-state area. Will I be able to represent, represent those partners outside of Iowa as well? Sounds like an Iowa-nice kind of question. I don't see why not. I mean, ultimately, we all want people to come to Iowa. And if they have to come to Iowa by landing in Chicago and then getting here, totally fine. Even if you're going to take I-80 and start in Iowa, start in Illinois, come through Iowa, go to Nebraska, but you're stopping in Iowa this time. You know, you have to make those stops. And we can't just think that our little pie is all people want. We've got to get them here first, right? And we'll do what it takes to get them here. Anyone else?
I think we have a number of communities across the state, especially on the border, that have a situation like that. You know, you point to Keokuk or extreme northeast Iowa, where you're working across those borders and those rivers for a reason, to make sure that they come to the destination. And, you know, one exercise that I've gone through working with my neighbors to the west, is that we may be three counties in two states, we are one destination. And likewise, we want to support our members, our Iowa members, and how they can be successful. And if they're successful, then I think ITIP will be successful. So to the extent that we can make that happen, we will do that. Knowing that, you know, there's some limitations, as, you know, you start talking about, you know, if I were to talk about trying to represent the Henry Dorley Zoo, you know, in ITIP, that might be a little bit challenging. But in terms of representing the destination, that's a different story that I think we can fully get behind.
Any more questions? Does anyone on the board want to make a closing statement? I mean, I have one, of course, but.
Go for it, Kim.
All right. You know what? I am really excited. When I saw this idea, I was like, oh, my gosh, yes, let's get together, let's have that large voice. What is your dream for Iowa? And how are you going to make it happen for your organization? I think ITIP can be a very valuable part of that. And I can't wait to see you guys as members, July 1.